Fifth, five.
Good evening and welcome to the April 5th episode of the Board of Selectment Meeting, or Select Board Meeting, which is also via Zoom, YouTube, et cetera, et cetera. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry for my fast beginning. People know. So do I have a motion regarding executive session?
I move that the board enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss collective bargaining with the Norfolk Municipal Clerical Employees represented by--
How about Police Department?
That's, thank you. I was like, hmm, that didn't, with the Norfolk Police Department, employees represented by--
We didn't change this.
Local 301 AFL-CIO-CLC. In so far as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and invite Chief Stone, Todd Lindmark, and Scott Bragdon, Blythe Robinson, and Amanda Johansson to participate. The board will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
So a public meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. All those in favor saying aye. Carolyn Van Tyn, aye.
Nadea Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Now we're painstakingly in executive session.
[laughing]
Welcome back to regular session of the April 5th Select Board Meeting. Blythe, can you take us through the open session?
Of course. We're going to start with the action items to consider authorizing the filing of a application with the MSBA for the expansion of the Freeman County School. Consider ratifying the successor collective bargaining agreement with the Norfolk Police Officers Association. To consider approval of the FY 23 annual operating budget, present that to town meeting. Approval to apply for state community compact municipal fiber grant. To consider abatement of a water bill for 10 Mill River Road. And then we have approval of the Norfolk Community League's Community Day Road Race on Sunday, June 12th. And use of the town hill by the Norfolk Farmers Market from June 8th to the end of September on Wednesdays. Discussion items include discussing the warrant for the May 10th Annual Town Meeting, discussing the recruitment process for the town administrator position, town administrator updates, and then you have five warrants to approve and one set of minutes.
Awesome. Well, I guess what brings us to public comment. Is there anybody leaving? I don't have anybody online. Nope. All right, well then, moving right along. Action item number two.
So this is the application to file with the MSBA for the expansion of the Freeman County School, and joining us is Dr. Alardi, and I think-- Kennedy School, and joining us is Dr. Allardy, and I think maybe a board member or two on...
Our district business consultant, Barry Neckaus.
Thank you. I could see his face. I couldn't see his name. So as you know, this is, we've applied twice already, and fortunately, we were turned down, but the school committee would like to try one more time. And so in your packet is a memo from Ingrid about that, as well as the actual vote language, which is also in your packet. And both Ingrid and Barry and are here to...
I'm here for why.
And Madora are here to talk with you about the reasons why and any questions you may have. School Committee has already taken their vote, so it's...
They have.
So it's up to Select Board, because as you recall, it's a vote by both boards, and it's due at the end of April.
Thank you.
So can I just speak from here, or do I have to...
Come to a microphone, would be great.
Thanks for having us. Madora, do you want to join me?
Sure.
Just pull the microphone.
I'll roll with it.
There you go.
So as you know, we have been in the process of looking at the need for an expansion of the Freeman Kennedy School. I've come to the board before and presented the enrollment study that was done, as well as the findings of the space study committee. Currently, we are completely out of space at the H. Olive Day School. We have converted the teacher's workroom into a classroom. We've enclosed the server and can change that area into an instructional space. We have to add an additional preschool classroom next year. We do not have space to accommodate that. We've already taken our computer lab, and now our tech integration teachers housed on the stage at H. Olive Day. We don't have a computer library or media center. Next year, we will lose the music room in order to accommodate the additional preschool classroom, which means we will continue to provide a high-quality music program, but it will be traveling from classroom to classroom, which does change and impact curriculum. We are looking at solutions for that to try to preserve what we have, but we don't have any space. As the enrollment rose up to Freeman Kennedy, we're very quickly running out of space there as well. The project that we had looked at would provide a solution to the space crisis at both buildings by moving the early childhood and preschool programs over to the first floor of the Freeman Edition, and the additional classrooms for Freeman would be up on the second floor. From a cost perspective, it's the best, most cost-effective solution for the space crowding in two different buildings by doing one project. We've applied to MSBA. There were, as you probably are aware, across the Commonwealth, there are a tremendous number of schools that are aging. I think you work in...
Yes, I do.
One that has recently been. But they're saying that there are many, many buildings that are over 40, 50 years old. With the pandemic, those older districts and older buildings don't have great ventilation systems, don't have the capacity to change, and they definitely were given priority in the last round. So we will apply again. We are recommending bringing forward a warrant article as well to move forward with a feasibility study, independent of MSBA, because if we are not selected for funding in this next round, the town needs to have information to make other decisions as to what the cost would be to do it independently, what would be involved. So we're doing that separately. All we're asking tonight is what you have done in the past, is to allow us to submit an application to MSBA. It does not bind us to moving forward with MSBA or with any kind of a project, but I can't submit it without the vote of the board, both the school board and the Select Board, to allow us to apply for consideration.
Do you want to jump in or add anything?
Just worthwhile to note that last year, during remote learning, one of the reasons we couldn't offer full-day kindergarten was also because of the fact that we were out of space at the HOD. So there is a class of children moving through the system who did not have access to the same curriculum that their peers on either side of them have had. So some of the learning loss we're seeing, I think, is probably a result of that. We just couldn't fit everybody in with spacing.
Barry's here, too. He has information if anybody wants further clarification on the budget end of it, but this application just allows us to be considered. What would then happen is their board will review projects, select people for participation. If we're selected, then we'd have to come forward again to decide, do we want to move forward with this project with MSBA funding? In the past, when MSBA has worked with us, they've funded projects at approximately 52% for Norfolk, so it's significant if we're looking at a... I mean, when we had this done several years ago, the estimated cost was around $20 million. That's three years old now at this point, and we know construction costs are climbing. But even if that comes in at $25 or $30 million, 52% is a big chunk of that. So I think it's worth applying. Barry, anything you want to add? Oh, you're muted.
You're muted.
Looks like he's unmuted on his side.
No, lip reading.
Andrew, he's unmuted on his side, but not coming through.
Yeah, he's not muted here, too.
Yeah, he's not muted.
Okay. Thumbs up, are we good with what I've shared?
Problem solver.
So in your packet is the language. MSBA requires specific language, which is, you know, lengthy and cumbersome to vote to apply for the application. So any questions? Any questions you have or any...
So I just have a couple. I'm sure other people do as well. I'll say off the bat that I shouldn't, because I've heard every year, and I agree, it's an easy ask, it's kind of a no-brainer ask, but these are just more generalized FYI questions. How long has there been or was there full-day kindergarten?
Oh, gosh.
For the sake of, I have a current seventh grader who did not have full-day kindergarten.
I was going to say, I don't think any of my kids did.
I think it was the year subsequent to him.
It's been at least five or six years that we've...
I was just curious because...
We've always had it.
Because I have a current third grader that did have...
Right.
I have paid and I have not paid in the past.
Yes. So we've always offered the full-day kindergarten option, but we also offered a half-day program in kindergarten was tuition-based. I think it was six years ago that we transitioned to all universal full-day.
Okay. I just, because I knew, I didn't think mine, like your seventh grader, my eighth grader, I didn't think had, but I was just...
We offered it, but it was tuition-based.
Sure. And I know that from a timing perspective, it wouldn't work, but you had said you were going to ask them one more time. Is there a prescription on how many times you can ask them, or is it just because of the timing of the building?
No. So they open, there's an annual application period that opens generally in February and closes in April, and districts are invited to apply during that time. When we were declined, we were encouraged to reapply the last two years. I think that the demand has outweighed what they had available in revenue to fund projects, so it wasn't that they didn't think it was a viable project. They just prioritized based on emergency conditions, ventilation, critical needs, and we weren't, we didn't make that cut. But no, we can continue to apply. I think what's going to happen, though, is that if MSBA invites us in, it's a four-year process to build with them. We have to do a year of schematic design, then we have to bid out the project, and so...
And you can't wait.
There's, yeah, there's got to, that's why I think you should do.
I just wasn't sure if there was a rules-based reason for the, or a common sense or...
Yeah. It's a timing reason. So if we know it's four years, we think we can do one more round of applications. They should be announcing, based on this application period, generally, they announce invitations in December. So we can probably wait through one more time period if we do the feasibility study jointly.
Which was going to be my next question, is how do you work the nexus between the feasibility study and your weight on the funding?
So what we would hope to do is procure the funding for the feasibility study at the May Town Meeting. If we get that funding, we would bid it out this, over the summer, hopefully hire somebody to engage in that work, and we would begin the feasibility study, hopefully with the goal of having it done by around March, so that we would know what the total cost of the project would be moving forward. If MSBA announces invitations, the first step in their build process is to require a feasibility study. We would want to go with a vendor that works with MSBA. They won't guarantee that every aspect of the feasibility study they'll take. They may have to redo some pieces of it or may ask for additional work, scope of work, but hopefully, it would streamline and make that process shorter. I think the likelihood, based on the number of projects coming forward and the continued need, again, for older systems, older buildings over 50, we may not get invited in, and I think we have to realistically plan for that. So if they announce in December or January, then you have a couple of months to go back to Town Meeting. We would have the feasibility information, we'd have, we'd be prepared for that. If they decline us, we would still be prepared to go forward with a good cost estimate to the town at Spring Town Meeting.
Okay, so that was going to be, sort of, was a two-pronged question.
Yep.
Is there anything about having, beyond obviously the timing of the, in terms of the importance of a feasibility study, is there anything about having received approval at Town Meeting for a feasibility study which improves our chances of being invited in through the process?
Well, the application for MSBA is due by April 29th, so we won't know.
Well, I just figured if they're looking, like if they're, if they're not going to, like, actually invite you until the winter, I would have theorized that they would be reviewing the applications, and I wondered if the fact of your application, if somehow they learned...
Then, we may have additional data, depending on where we are in the feasibility process. They do review, they do send engineering teams out to look at the building and site for projects they're considering. If we have additional information based on feasibility, we'll definitely share it. We can add to our application during those site visits, but I don't know whether we'll have a vendor in and how much we'll have by the time they come to do that project.
And then the last of my questions, and then I'll shut up, is if they, hopefully, hopefully this won't happen, but in the event that they say in December, yeah, no thanks, would it would be Spring Town Meeting that you would be asking?
What we'd probably do, yes, we would have the feasibility, we'd know what the cost to the town would be, we could do a study on, you know, what debt's coming off, what the task impact, we'd have much more information to bring forward, and I think what we'd probably look for in the spring would be funding for the schematic design work. So we'd do it in stages, similar to MSBA, do the schematic design, which would take a year, and then we'd move forward with coming forward for requests for funds for the actual construction project.
All right. That's it for me. Anita?
Just for the people watching who are thinking, why don't you just get modular classrooms? Can you just answer that for the public so that they understand the cost of that?
So we looked into that when we had the Standing Space Study Committee, and we got some pricing and quotes for bringing those in. Modular solutions, they're not as cost-effective as people think. There is hundreds of thousands of dollars of site work. We also have to have portable water, moving the units. When we looked at it, it was over $1.6 million to get a certain number of classrooms that would meet the short-term need. But then there are also standalone units, they're not connected to the building in terms of emergency, access to the nurse, other things like that. To tie them in is an additional cost, so you're looking, and then you're renting, too, in most cases. So it's not really, it's not an inexpensive solution and wouldn't really be a great long-term solution for the town.
Thank you.
Sure. My questions are both based on process for go-no-go and budget forecast, so those are both covered already. Thank you.
Okay. I guess, thank you very much. I guess we got a vote, right?
And you have to read word for word.
Kevin, you're up.
It's a bird's eye, and I do this also.
I know, it totally is.
We had to do it twice once, didn't we?
We did, because we missed the line.
You reread the whole thing?
Yeah, we did. We missed something.
I did it auctioneer-style, it was great.
Now I feel like it's a challenge.
Whatever the word is that means a challenge has just been, I guess the glove has been slapped or something like that, I don't know, I'm tired.
Starts with resolve.
Thank you. Having convened in an open meeting on April 5th, 2022, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Norfolk Select Board, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendents to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 6, 2022, for the Freeman Kennedy School located at 70 Boardman Street, which described and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Elimination of existing overcrowding and prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments, which must be substantiated. The district is currently out of classroom space at the H. Olive Day School and cannot accommodate the additional classrooms needed next year without impacting other core educational programs. The district has already lost the computer lab and will lose the music room next year. We have converted both the server room and the teacher copy room into classroom instructional spaces. Increased enrollment due to significant building and construction has resulted in severe overcrowding at the H. Olive Day School and is expected to result in similar conditions at the Freeman Kennedy School in the next few years. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Norfolk to filling an application, filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So that wasn't a motion, we just needed, he just needed to read.
That is the motion, you need to vote on that.
That's a very wordy motion.
So then we need a second?
Yep, second.
All right. We don't need to roll call, correct? Because we're all here.
You're the person...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I did also just want to let you know that we have contracted with NESTEC, and we are updating our enrollment projection study based on changes in the market as a result of the pandemic. Our consultant is working with the town manager, with Rich McCarthy, and we will have that data for you prior to Town Meeting, just so you can see what the new projections look like.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Nice to see you.
You.
All right. Item three.
Item three is considering the ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement with the Norfolk Police Officers Union. The contract that has been in place is due to expire on June 30th of this year. So as you know, we entered into negotiations with them last month after meeting with you to discuss parameters, and pleased to tell you that we have been able to settle that contract within those parameters, as well as some language changes that we felt were important in the best interest of the town. The, we, the version in your packet, excuse me, the version you're going to get tonight is already been signed by the union. They have voted to ratify it already, and their president has executed it. So if the board is comfortable doing so, we'd ask you to vote to approve it and execute it after the meeting.
All right. So I don't think, do you need any discussions?
None.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to ratify a successor collective bargaining agreement with the Norfolk Police Officers Bargaining Unit for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess we're moving on to number four.
Number four is the FY23 Town Operating Budget. So we met last week to discuss a number of adjustments to the budget and got your feedback. It was clear you wanted to leave the Norfolk School budget as it was. We understand that. So when Todd and I met and talked about it some more, it was our collective recommendation, Todd, please come up if you'd like, to put the same budget back in front of you, but by changing the, increasing the amount of ARPA funds that we would use to balance the budget. Just didn't feel like there were any other areas of the budget that we could responsibly cut back and not just be adding them later in the year when the year unfolded. Having said that, I received an email this afternoon from KP Schools, from superintendent, letting us know, letting all three school towns know that they had made a decision to reduce their ask of the three communities by $100,000, and our share of that is just under $33,000, $32,896. Their reason for doing so is they were requested by the other two towns to look at their revenue projections a little more closely, and they have. They are feeling a little more hopeful that state aid will be increased above what the governor's budget is, and/or they would take a little bit more out of their excess and deficiency account to make up the difference if that doesn't happen. They're not, there's nothing that they feel they can cut from their budget to get down. So taking, so they've reapproved their budget at the slightly lower amount, which enables us to lower the amount that we would take from ARPA to balance our budget, because we were about out of balance by the $40,000 we wanted to leave in the school budget, so this closes the gap by almost 33. So that's where we are right now. I know that advisory is meeting next week, and they'd like to start approving articles, so your approval of the budget would help, but if you want to wait, you could do it on the 19th. That's like the last date before they put their recommendations to bed. So, Todd, do you have anything you wanted to add? Anything I left out?
Those are the changes from the last time. What we talked about was basically the KP situation has changed for the better.
So I just have a couple of questions. The first is, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that the next meeting is the 26th because of April vacation? No?
Yeah, it's the first and third, and...
No, I understand it's the first and third, but... No, I understand it's the first and third, but the 19th is the middle of, of schools vacation, and I'm not here. I mean, I don't need to be here. I'm going to be in Punta Cana and I'm not, I'm not here. I'm not signing in, I'm not joining a Zoom, I'm just not. My, I have it in my calendar for the 26th, so maybe I just thought we were going to change it, but I could have, I thought that we had talked about it, doesn't matter.
Well, it does, because I'm in South Carolina.
So maybe we did...
I just advertised a public hearing for that night for the Comcast agreement because...
So I can, I can remote it though.
Okay.
If we need to absolutely have the meeting, I can remote it.
Absolutely not remoting in from Punta Cana, I will just say that on the record. People can vilify me in the press, but I am not remoting in from Punta Cana. How difficult is it to change? I mean, I suppose we can have a short meeting for whatever it is that you can't change because you just did a public announcement and then have another meeting.
We need to sign the warrant too, for the town meeting. It's, I mean, if you're comfortable signing the actual signature page prospectively, assuming that the, the Anita and Kevin would execute it, that's fine. We could do that, because we'd still have two members to vote.
Right. And I'm fine doing that, just because I don't want anything to get hung up while I'm...
And then we can just have a remote meeting for...
In a swim-up bar with a mojito.
Pina colada.
Well, it will be a pina colada though, you're not wrong. I actually don't like mojitos, but I do like a pina colada so much. I like the pina colada.
A little too sweet for me.
Yeah, yeah, just some sweet. That's what people say about me. So, all right, so it's the 19th, and if there's something, because I did, I'll talk about something else that I, I may want to have another meeting on, but, so that was the first issue that doesn't relate to the budget.
Can we just clarify what we decided? Did we decide that we're having a remote meeting next time?
With both of them away, we should have a remote meeting, and if you, and as long as two of you can be there, then we're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I can be there.
Sweet. It's two out of three. I mean, maybe I could be there, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to be there. That's just, like I said, someone can write it down in their little book and complain about me about it later. See how much I'm worried about that? So that was not about the budget, but was just a housekeeping, like I didn't want to forget it. As, how much is the delta that's coming out of ARPA? I know before, the amount that we were trying to close was 40 and change, and 30 and change has now been made up with 33 or whatever it is. Was it around seven?
7104, yep.
7104. And that, I know, everyone knows how I feel about consistent, like, but it's a small enough amount that I'll, I'll say that I'm comfortable with that for whatever, for those of you, again, scoring at home. But I wanted to remark, and this is what we may need a meeting for late, that I am present at before, I'm no longer the chair, which I think would be May 3rd, right, that we usually have the reorg after the election. But one of the things that I had been talking about was, rather than having 40 and change come out of ARPA, I wanted to look at excising one of the superintendent positions from DPW. I'm perfectly happy that we didn't have to do that because the information came in from KP. But I'm mindful of the fact that we did determine, granted, we couldn't fill the position, so it's sort of a net-net, but that we did decide that we weren't going to fill a grounds position. And while I am comfortable with the numbers in the budget, I'm comfortable with seven and change from ARPA, I'm comfortable with everyone getting what it is that we have allotted to them, it is my opinion that we should be exploring whether or not DPW should remove the third superintendent or continue to hunt for the grounds person, and when that person is located, who actually knows what to do with grounds, remove the superintendent position and transfer those funds over to the other position. Doesn't need to be talked about right now, because the issue before us is just the overarching budget. I'm happy with it. But what I was thinking was that we could put something on for the 26th, which is when I thought it was, for whatever reasons, it's in my calendar, which is when I'm here, so that we could vet that separate issue. It can also happen on, on Anita's watch, but then I'm not in charge of the agenda. I mean, I could ask Anita to, she doesn't have to. So that's why I was figuring the 26th, just because I am mindful of the fact that we do actually need grounds help, and I do not believe we need three folks at the helm of DPW. I'm just one person, but that's my other sort of tack on, has nothing to do with the budget tonight, so long as we're clear that, I know the money will be available, you can shift it around within your, within your tranche. So I have no issues with the budget. I thank everybody for all of the noodling and moving and adding and subtracting and math, and I am happy we were able to leave KP, I mean, not KP, our schools, Norfolk Schools alone this year. I know that they have a lot of challenges and I'm thrilled to death about that. So that's just me. Anita?
I am also quite content, the superintendent discussion can be another time, but it's an interesting conversation.
Right.
I'm also content with the budget. I'm, I just want to publicly say out loud again that through a combination of hard work, cleverness, and a little bit of luck, we also tripled our, or nearly tripled our free cash. So I just, out there for the three people watching, to the credit of the people in this room and a whole bunch of others, we have managed to, we are taking seven and change from ARPA, but we've also nearly tripled our free cash, and that's kudos. That's all I have to say.
Kevin?
No, just really appreciate all the work, all the, going back to the drawing board, all the persistence in getting us a number that fit into, at times, three different expectations.
Yeah.
So we really appreciate all the work. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Sorry.
Just one friendly amendment, the number, instead of what's in your packet, it should be 44,365,623, because we made the change of the KP.
Say it one more time?
Here you go.
Thank you. Do you want me to go then?
Sure.
I move that the board vote to recommend a budget of 44,365,623 for FY23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I almost forgot that I was supposed to do that, sitting here. All right, number five.
Do you want to put that on for May 3rd? I wasn't sure if the board would want to meet because it is election night, we can, we certainly, some years you have, some years you haven't.
So, I, talking about DPW?
Just, we would regularly have a meeting on the 3rd unless you don't want to because it is election night, so I'm just asking.
So my recollection is that with respect to election night, I don't think that it's, I don't know, is anything contested in town?
No.
It isn't, and, and there isn't any, we can't have a public hearing is the only rule? So it's up to you whether you want to have the meeting or you want to take the night off, it's, either is fine?
I guess we can sort of, we can think about it, because my recollection is that the last year we did it only because we were, because there was no...
Right.
Nothing was contested, and that way we could reorg that night, which I think makes sense.
Good.
Pass that baton along. But I don't think that that should be a meeting to talk about DPW structure.
Okay.
But, so I, we can go off by, and I can think about, you know, what makes sense, whether it should be something that happens before my tenure is behind me or after, like, I don't know that it matters.
Okay.
So, so we can just deal with that, definitely.
And as to that conversation, it'd be interesting to look at DPW budgets from other towns comparable, just to kind of see how...
Staffing, all of that.
And acreage, like, because that's a, that's a factor.
Well, and I think that there's...
Miles of road.
There's a lot, there's a lot that goes into sort of my consternation, and I don't want to do it in a way that's mean or pokey, as has happened in the past with members of the board, but I think that, not anyone here.
You gave me the look like...
I just was like, you were that, you were just looking at me all the time.
She didn't look at me.
Well, he was with me the time. But, but there's a lot to vet, so yes, we can pull together some information. So that's, that's that. So I would say, yeah, May 3rd for reorganization.
Okay.
And we can hopefully celebrate my victory. You don't want to, got to knock on wood, because you know, the write-ins will get you. They will get you. Oh, they, especially the ones that say they're not doing a write-in, but then they actually are and they forget and they leave a voicemail for, you know, people that you know.
That never happens, right?
Yes, that never happens. All right, on to number five.
Number five is a request to, to allow us to apply for a state community compact grant for their municipal fiber grant program this year. Sorry, that came out awfully wordy. So they've put out for any communities that are in the compact, which we are, the opportunity to apply to expand our fiber, install or extend our fiber network that helps improve municipal operations, disaster recovery, or resiliency. And so we've identified three projects, fiber between the police station and the water tank, just up the hill from there, and a second fiber between town hall and the fire station, and then one between the DPW building and the transfer station. Altogether, they are just under $100,000, $98,290. The state does require a 5% match. Todd and I have talked about that and feel that ARPA funds would be a reasonable match for that. I can go into detail about why all three are great, if you'd like, or not, but it's one of those situations where it will improve our operations, whether it's radios or, you know, when we lose power here at town hall, we lose computers, we lose a lot. Moving those things to the fire station in its present form or future would be awesome. So we would like approval to apply.
I have no questions about this fascinating fiber optics topic.
Oh, it sounds awesome.
I don't want to say, I will say, I don't want to hoard all of the excitement to myself. Kevin?
I mean, this is specifically one of the uses that ARPA was intended to be used for, so there's not really too much you can really go off on.
Nor do I need you to, I know...
Enough, you're good.
Got it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Anything further?
No, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
I move that the board approve the submission of a municipal fiber grant by the town of Norfolk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
Item six is an abatement of a water bill for 10 Mill River Road. This is one of those situations where the, the, that property receives its water from Franklin because of where the water lines are. So they send a bill and we in turn bill the homeowner. In this case, the property was vacant for a while, so there was no water being used, but that just didn't quite connect between us and Franklin about that. So we billed them for $34, $37.50 that we should not have, so we need to abate that, so there's no charge to, like I said, when it was vacant, they, there's a new owner, house is now occupied, should not be a hiccup in the future, just one of those oddities that comes along.
All right. I have no questions, Anita?
None.
It's going to be weird to say I move that the board vote to abate a water billing for 10 Mill.
I heard you say 10 Mill and I was like, what?
Mill River Road.
10 million? Like, I immediately got my attention, not that I...
No, I promise not to do that. We don't have 10 million.
Whose bill is that big?
It's a lot of water.
Somebody with a lot of teenagers. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to abate a water billing for 10 Mill River Road in the amount of $37.50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
A 5K road race by the Community League on Sunday, June 12th. They had originally wanted to have it on Community Day. We convinced them that their, their route on that day would not be a great plan. They thankfully did agree, they moved it to the 12th. Everyone is comfortable with their, their timing and their route, and all those issues have been worked out, so we recommend approval.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
No questions for mine.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to approve the Norfolk Community League's Community Day 5K road race on Sunday, June 12th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I forgot that one. I forgot to ask for a second a while ago, so it's been a day. Item eight.
Is the Norfolk Farmers Market, they'd like to be back again this year to have their farmers market on Wednesdays from June 8th to September 28th. I've had no issues with it, it's a well-loved program, I'm sure everyone would like to see them back. There's no conflicts with other things going on on Town Hill, no issues with any of the departments, so we recommend approval.
Any questions?
No, sounds fabulous.
Have they always done Wednesday?
I think so.
Just curious. I want to be able to go to the farmers market, but I am...
I moved that the board approved the use of Town Hill, sorry for reading over there, Cece. I moved that the board approved the use of Town Hill for Norfolk Farmers Market on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, from June 8th, 2022 through September 28th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I feel, I feel editorialized.
Let's be efficient.
I'm a bit office sometimes. And number nine, we're going to pump the brakes on moving through these right now.
Well, it is 30...
Nine.
33 warrant articles and 31 pages, so I guess I'll ask you, how would you like to attack it? Because I can go one by one, or I can hit what I think are the high points.
Would you mind doing one by one, even if some of them are just sort of, this is what we do every year, as you know, if you have a question, stop me, but, do you know what I mean?
I got it, no problem.
Thank you.
Number one is the election, pretty straightforward, and no votes need to be taken on that. Number two is to pay any unpaid bills, we put this on the warrant every year, just in case, as we advise, told advisory last week, there are no unpaid bills.
That was okay.
But just in case something pops up. Number three is transfers that we need for this year's budget. We do expect one for snow and ice, at least 125,000. Todd and I need to work on that list. Are you aware of anything else right now? I didn't think so, yeah. So that, that will, we'll take care of those. Number four is the compensation schedule for employees not included in a union. We're recommending a 1.5% step, which comports with what the other, what other employees are receiving next year.
1.5% cola.
1.5% cola, thank you. I'm talking too fast.
That's my fault. I put the pressure on. I apologize.
So that's standard. Number five is the budget, which you just voted a couple of minutes ago to recommend for next year. Articles six and seven, I'll take those together, those are the two enterprise fund budgets, water is first and wastewater is second. We talked about those early in the budget process, I don't know if anyone has any questions about those amounts. Articles eight and nine are the two that we always have on the warrant for any type of capital spending. First one is from available sources of money, like free cash. The second one is anything we would use to borrow money for, to buy, like we did with the snow plow truck last November. We generally don't do capital in the spring, but we have them on there just in case.
Is there anything, okay. And is there likely to be anything?
No, because we're working on our plan for ARPA.
Right.
And we will have things, but that only requires the board to be approving of those. If we didn't have ARPA, we would be back in front of you for IT, for computers, because we'd hope to buy our usual grouping of replacement stuff in the fall, and we were planning to use CARES money. Well, CARES money was available at the time, but guess what? There were no computers. So Todd, try as he might, couldn't actually buy any desktops that he wanted to get, or servers.
The same reason for cars and that kind of thing?
That kind of thing. So we would have been putting it here on the, on the spring to take care of that, so we didn't get behind. Well, then ARPA comes along, and that's an eligible expense, so we're transferring it to that.
Got it.
Instead. Is that fair? So, short answer, playing to IP both of those. Article number 10 is reports from various committees.
Is this the thing that we had to do in January? Like that, this is my homework assignment, like the statement? No. No, this is just the committees?
Any committee wants to get up and talk about what they're doing, or the fire station committee might want to give people a short update about where they stand, that sort of thing.
But most committees don't.
No, no, generally, in my time here, they haven't.
I think you're talking about the town report.
Yeah, I got that. I was confused with the town report.
Thank you.
This is, yeah, I remember. Certain, certain committees like to talk.
Yes. Article 11 is the annual operating, excuse me, revolving fund accounts. The number of, the listing here has not changed from last year. It's the same specific requests and the same expenditure limits. None of them have been increased from FY '22. Article 12 is a request by the planning board to add money to their, what they've gotten from the state to update the master plan. They need a total of $140,000. They have 40 from a community compact grant that they already received. They're looking to add 50 to it this spring, and 50 next spring to undertake that whole process. So they have enough to get going with. Article 13 is what...
May I just go back for a second? Can you just give me an example of what kinds of things that money would be spent on?
Generally, it's going to be consulting services to help, to hire a firm to help guide the town through an update of the 2000 plan and go through the various charrettes and other activities that will help the town decide that their master plan wants to be somehow different than it is today.
Can I ask, this is outside the budget, right?
Via free cash.
So with a school, and with a fire station, and with a budget that we've just needed ARPA funds to close, I mean, I understand that it's, it's up to the town. I'm not going to say it shouldn't go on the warrant, but I just wanted to make sure that this is an ask for 100 over two years, over and above what we've, just to make sure I'm clear.
You're clear.
Okay, all right.
Article 13 is what Dr. Lardy was just here speaking about, which is the feasibility study.
May I go back?
Of course.
I'm sorry.
Don't be.
My processing speed is a little bit slow today. So why isn't that in the normal budget? Is it because it's like a one-time?
Yeah, it's not a typical annual expense of the town.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you know, rule of thumb, you do one every 10 years. Ours was done in 2007. Is it the right time for the town, do you know?
Do you recall how much we spent in 2007?
It was done by a committee of volunteers. I don't believe there was a consultant hired.
Okay.
I don't know if they spent money on small things or not, but it definitely wasn't managed. Yeah, I don't think it was big. Walter would be able to tell us.
I just was curious.
You wouldn't happen to know? Wasn't here, yeah, sorry.
All right.
Article 13 is the feasibility study for Freeman Kennedy School Expansion. This is, has been targeted at $150,000, though I did hear from the superintendent late last week that it may be a bit higher. She's getting, she's getting some estimates right now. This would be paid for out of two sources of funds. If it's 150, approximately half would come out of money left over in the Olive Day Roof account that wasn't spent, and the other half would be free cash.
So is this, I mean, for lack of a more elegant term, in competition with the 50? In other words, this is in addition to the 50? Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep. Article 14 and through 16 are ones for the Community Preservation Committee. First one is to put the mandated 10% of all the funds you receive into the three buckets that are required under the law. We vote this one every year, just like this. Article 15 is to take $15,000 and have it aside for the committee to spend on the administrative expenses that they might have throughout the year. Again, we do that everyone, every year, and their project this spring, excuse me, is to spend $5,000 from their open space reserve to do a survey and map vegetation in various lakes and ponds, so that they can develop an annual program in the future, once they have the data, to be able to do regular treatments. So be proactive. Articles 17, the next six articles are all related to the recodification of the general and zoning bylaws. And just to give you a big picture, we end up splitting these into three articles each. The first of three of each set are to simply renumber and re, or recapture, recaption, so that they fit into the general, the E-code model of how you lay out your bylaws. So inserting chapters and articles and numbering.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty standard. Then what we did was...
I'm sorry, both, really quickly.
Sure.
Did you guys see that there was a prohibition of mechanical bucking devices in Norfolk?
Well, that needs to change.
What the heck?
I feel like we found something that everyone can get behind.
Yes, you'll be able to have it back at the Eagle Brook if this passes.
Second floor, perfect.
So...
Town Hill, like...
Maybe we should have put this at the end of the warrant, so that everyone had to stay for the fun part.
The debate's gonna be riveting.
I'm getting up for that.
So then what we did was, we've taken all the, all the actual changes and broken them into two other articles, non-substantive changes and substantive changes. So what you see in bright green strikeout is something that people were considering a substantive change, like allowing for mechanical bucking devices, and moved it into a subsequent article, so that the changes that you see in, say, Article 18 are very simply changes that are because of, let me just get to the description, because it's really, I think it's really helpful. These improve grammar, ease of understanding, remove outdated references, like if a state law has changed and doesn't exist anymore, it's now got a new number, is bringing us up to date with that. Making sure that we're consistently referring to things, like if the zoning board of appeals is, that's their title. If it says just Board of Appeals, and now we'll say Zoning Board of Appeals everywhere, that sort of thing. And like I said, provision that we're in compliance with state law. We hope after 10, the moderator has had a look at these, advisory's been going through these. If you've got a chance to watch the meeting on the 23rd of the advisory committee, you're up to date on that kind of stuff. Try to make sure the things that are here, people find pretty pedestrian, right? The things that may not be as pedestrian are in, are now Article 19, which people may want to, as a group or one by one, decide each one of these. Like, do you want to allow...
Do you think that there won't be people coming up on the first one?
That's what makes town meeting what it is.
So much fun.
So much discussion's gonna go into the boilerplate that shouldn't bother anybody. So, I mean, I already see a wayward comma that's gonna trouble me tonight.
One of them that caught advisory's question was on canvassing and soliciting, you know, at the staff level, we suggested that the $2 charge was really probably not going to cover any effort to do something about that. The $10 seemed like a pretty basic minimum, but other people felt that that was significant. So we moved it into the substantive...
Substantive, whatever, yeah.
Changes. Whether we take these as a kind of consent calendar, or try to vote them all at once, or Jay does a hold and we do them one by one, is up to people other than myself.
Yep.
But trying to be, hopefully, people will feel comfortable with the non-substantive, and then we can decide whether we want to make these changes or we don't.
I'm still processing that mechanical bucking devices are so highly regulated.
Well, it looks like, actually, they're not, they're not, it's, this struck the fact that there was the repeal of the prohibition. So it's just taking the repeal...
It's moving it out of...
Taking it off of the books. So it, we can, we can mechanically buck.
Again, if it passes.
The prohibition was repealed, and they're just striking that from the language.
I just want to know what happened on June 1st, 1982, to require us to have to...
That's when they repealed it. Oh, it was adopted, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
There's town reports, we're happy to get you that copy.
Just ask the chief.
I'm putting that on my action item.
I don't know.
Or sometime in the...
So, so there are changes in here. I can also, did we put it in your packet, which was, there is a line by line, another 30-odd pages of exactly why we made each change we made, in case anyone wants to noodle through all of those. It's helpful, it's interesting. So Carol and I, along with Bob and Bullock and Rich McCarthy, to some extent, and chiefs, all been involved in this, going through these one by one by one. So that's a very high level of what's happening with general, and the same theme comes into play for zoning. Article, do, 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 let me get back to it. Article 20 is the renumbering, put it into this, the way that E-code organizes zoning bylaws. And then Article 21 is the non-substantive changes, and there are, you know, a number of pages of those. There's only one item pulled out for a substantive change, and that is, in Article 22, felt that the definition of a family was a substantive change. And so what has initially been proposed is in here. After this was pretty much getting ready to go to print, there was a question by the planning board, because they met last Wednesday night, about the words "traditional family unit." Like, today, in today's world, what is a traditional family unit? Should we use the word "traditional"? And so they are going to be looking at this and weighing in on which version they think it should be, because really, the planning board is the one who governs the zoning bylaw. So there's actually a motion in your packet to refer these back to them, because they need to have another public hearing on it to land on that. But that's the only, like I said, substantive change in zoning. That's, like I said, high level of all of those.
A telephone, thank you.
Yep. So that's Articles 20 through 22. Jumping then to 23, this one is a request for funds for Lawrence Street to conduct appraisals on a couple of properties to determine what their value would be to pay damages for a portion of right-of-way that we need to put the sidewalk in. So unfortunately, Lawrence Street is not nicely and neatly in the middle of the layout, and the agreement with the developer with comprehensive permit for weights crossing requires that the developer put in a sidewalk down to the bridge and up to the new development, and that he pay $10,000 towards the cost of planning for that. Well, so he's doing that, he's working on the plans, and we discovered that we need a little bit of area in front of two homes, and approached the property owners, one of them who does not want to give the town an easement at no cost, wants to be paid for it. So in order to do that, we need to figure out, spend some money to figure out what it's worth. So this will be a request for $15,000 to do that work. We hope it doesn't cost that much, we're working on getting quotes, but to be safe, want to ask for that request in order to be able to do the work. So this would be, unfortunately, coming back to you later to then, we were hoping this was, you know, accept easements, go forward, and we kind of hit, we hit a pause button. So that's what that's about. Article 24, this gets, next couple of articles get into changes in zoning bylaws that are separate from the codification. There are things that the planning board wanted to move forward. Article 24 is to amend the accessory building rules to allow certain things in the front yard that couldn't be before. This is a second attempt at this one. It came before us and got pulled in the past, and is back for approval this time. Just clarifies what can go in relation to the front yard. And I see Rich's iPad there, just in case you have questions. I know he'll do a great job of telling you any more detail than I have, if you need that.
Can I have some more detail on Article 24? You said that it was brought...
Hey, Rich.
Withdrawn, and what's, what's the skinny on, because it says accessory building, and I, the word pool, and accessory, accessory buildings and swimming pools. But I guess this particular piece is just about accessory buildings.
The location, you got it.
I understand what the location is, the issue, but is an accessory building like a garage or a shed? Like, what's an accessory building actually mean? Like, it's an accessory?
Yeah, those are, those are great examples of accessory buildings. What, essentially what this attempted is...
Rich, your head is so big right now.
Is it?
No, it's just, you're the only one on the screen. It was like, we're like, how?
Oh, well, sorry.
Hey, Rich.
Anyway, but anyway, magnify it. We, last year, the, the attempt was to dig in, probably I would say, a little bit deeper into this and try to clarify setbacks, where structures to be, and we kind of went off into a much deeper path. The purpose before this one is really what we should have been in the first place, honestly, is just insert the word setback, so when you have accessory building that you know it's in the, you can't put it in the front yard setback, which is 50 feet from the property line. There is a, there is a diagram within the zoning bylaw...
Bless his...
That you can, you can look at and see what is a front yard, was a side yard, rear yard, et cetera. And then also diagram that you can look at and see where, on a corner lot, you have two front yards. So basically, it's just a, say, it is setback, that's the measuring point.
Gotcha.
That word wasn't in there, so that's where all the debate came from.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
All right, keep my head back.
Just, no, it's not anything to do, it's just everybody else disappeared, you know, like when there's a couple of people on the screen, and so everyone will be smaller, because it's sort of Brady Bunch-esque, and then they leave, and all of a sudden, Rich?
Yes.
On the screen. So, sorry, thank you, that was it. I just was curious of what the backstory was. Oh, look, there they, now Rich is small again.
Well, I'll ask him to hang close, just in case, I need a little more help on, on some of these. Article 25 is to amend the zoning bylaws regarding municipal parking areas, which would allow for applicants to apply to the planning board for special permit under certain conditions for outdoor recreation and parkland. And so you can see the changes that are either in bold or in strike-through on that section.
Awesome, thank you.
Article 26 is to add a definition to the zoning bylaws for nature center, and this gives you all the details about this. This caught some, some interest on Facebook, and I think some interest in the, at the planning board's public hearing last week, and they did make a couple of changes to it. I want to be clear, one thing I learned in all this process is, this change does not affect Stony Brook, and I know people were concerned about that, because they're already existing and they're in educational use. But I'm sure Rich can give a little more detail if the board wants it, as well as what the other couple of the things that the planning board was considering changing.
Sure. I'll briefly go over the changes. The planning board had the hearing last week, which is March 30th. The changes that were made was to allow, if a dwell, well, I should put some context to this. So this came about in terms of the caretaker for Leavenwild, which is the former Norfolk Airport property. They are going through the process to become an environmental foundation, and if you've been out there, there's trails there and encouraged passive recreation, similar to other open space uses out or in the area. And what they, they want to do over the short term and long term is develop other nature-based type uses passive, for people to enjoy the property. So we had to first create a definition, so they actually fit within the zoning bylaws for that residential district, which they, they sit in today. And so what you see before you, one of the things was the potential ability to build a dwelling unit on the property for a caretaker or employee. The change that the planning board made was to include family as part of that. There wasn't really an intention not to, somebody had a family, and they wanted to have their family live with them. They certainly could, whatever family is, that's how we define it today, into the future. So that change was added to it, so that it's clear that intent meant for an employee, if they had a family, they could live there as well. And then the other provision that was changed was a prohibition of having outside functions like weddings and those kind of events on the property, because as we learned last week at the public hearing, Mass Audubon has a lot of birthday parties there for folks. They've even had a wedding there at times. And so people are, it's become more of an interest in terms of having outdoor venues for those type of things. So that was removed from the definition. Do you still be permitted as a special permit use, so it'd have to go through permitting class, process with the planning board and the site plan, so there is some regulatory framework, but at least if they wanted to do that, they could have that option available. So those were the changes to it. And as we did clarify last meeting, there was some questions from people from Mass Audubon, whether or not they really did fall under that exemption in terms of the Dover Amendment as a nonprofit educational status. At least our read on it, they are, but... At least our read on it, they are, but with these changes, it neutralizes that particular issue for them, so they were comfortable, they support the changes, and hopefully we land on something that everybody will support.
All right.
Thank you, Rich, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So the rest of the articles, Articles 27 through 29 are typical ones, Chapter 90, authorization, accepting money that the town receives through grants, and authorizing you to sell surplus property. Then there are a couple of new ones, as we've talked about before, there's two articles related to the wastewater treatment plant. The first one is to make up a shortfall in Article 30 of any monies that we need to, to balance, to bring in the revenue that supports that budget. We haven't received any money since we did just before town, town council came to speak with you, we certainly hope that we will receive more, so this, we'll have to get back to you on the exact amount. But then, after we've had that conversation with town meeting, the next article is to petition the general court for a special act to authorize the establishment of a Norfolk Downtown Sewer District, which was one of the avenues that he recommended we take to be in a better stead in the future. We'll tell you that, actually, a kudos to Rich, who came, who was doing some research and realized the town had actually passed an act in 2010, but it never made it to the general court and it never got enacted. And so, we're looking at that now to see if that version still works for us or not. If it does, it could be resubmitted at the state level, and we wouldn't have to do this.
Nice.
If it doesn't quite meet our needs with what we understand them to be today, then we would put forth a new version and ask for that to be enacted. So, still working on that detail, but that's what that's about. Article 32 is to rescind some debt for the HLDA schools, you know, you have to borrow, you have to ask for authorization for the full amount when you do an MSBA project, we didn't need to borrow the amount that's in this article, we can rescind it and free up our levy capacity. And then the last article is to update the, the bylaw regarding the Community Preservation Committee, good catch by Carol, that now that we've got four precincts rather than three, we, we have to fix our Community Preservation Act so that we have a member from each district, because now we have four rather than three. So, no more complicated than that.
I didn't know that.
And, though-
Now you do.
That's, that's, that's all of them.
Thank you.
So, we have, one thing I will ask you to do, which is a little out of what we, how we typically handle things, because the planning board had their public hearing last week on the zoning articles, and some of them, like the recodification, they hadn't been able to see all these things earlier in the process, we need to actually refer them back to them so they can have another public hearing on those. So there is a motion in your packet, I would ask you to consider approving.
See the motion?
I was going to ask a question.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Of course.
If all of this-
I figured you were rushing me earlier.
I'm sorry.
Rushing me.
If all of this passes and everything's happy day, and how much comes out of free cash?
Forty and fifteen and eighty, I'm just off the top of my head. We haven't done our actual spreadsheet of exactly what we're asking for, for every article, but you've got about 75 right now for the school feasibility study, forty, that's 115 if you add the, excuse me, fifty-
Fifty.
If you add the-
Master plan.
Master plan, fifteen for the, the appraisals on Lawrence Street. I'm trying to think if I missed any, I don't think so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, actually, less than we've tended to spend at some town meetings, like my first arrive, we spent money on the Pan Classification Plan, and we, last year, some money for the Hazers Mitigation Plan Grant Match.
Okay.
Or all the capital.
I'm just curious.
How much is the snow removal?
I think we're, what are you, about 130?
Where's that coming out of?
That'll come out of free cash.
So that goes on top of what she asked?
Correct, yep, thank you, good, good catch.
It was a math one, too, so, I might go and play my, play my lottery numbers.
So, I mean, you always budget 250, and the more it snows, or we need to go out and-
Yeah.
We actually would rather it snowed than iced, that would be cheaper.
Cheaper than-
Yeah, it's interesting. And then in the fall, we can expect more, typically, right, more free cash spending.
Oh yeah, because that's when we're doing the capital.
That's when we do most of our-
Right, I mean, so we had, we started with three million-
Crazy spending.
We made a conscious decision to spend.
More proficient.
Hmm? Oh, it's totally crazy, I'm just kidding.
We only spent half it, because we didn't want to put ourselves in a difficult spot. And, but this year, so this year, we budgeted 100,000 for prison mitigation, we got 200, so there's some money that can come back. And, we had the additional foreclosure auction, that's bringing in money. People turn back money, other revenues come in higher, you know, I can't, it's too soon to begin to predict-
Sure.
But, you know, trying to make sure there's enough to be, and put money in stabilization, we spent a big amount on that in the fall, and putting money in OPEB. So that allows us to do those things.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
So we'll dust this all off and have it ready for execution, and we'll just make sure we're coordinated with all of you about a signature page prior to the week of the 19th.
I feel comfortable signing, based on what's going on here, before I go wheels up to Punta Cana, in case anybody missed that that's where I'm going, just let me reiterate.
Oh, all those changes are in your packet, these are the details.
I saw that in red, it just jumps up.
Yeah.
So we need a motion on the thing.
I move that the board vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendments to the planning board for its review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
That's over to you.
It's over to me, so in, in this one, it's discussing the recruitment process for the town administrator position, including the use of a consultant. I know, I see a Scott, I'm not sure if it's our Scott, but there's a Scott.
It is your Scott.
On the, on the screen, I will say that it's my opinion that rather than in the first instance securing a consultant, that I think that it's probably a task that we could take a shot at, from the standpoint that I would imagine, that I know that there are sites and search engines, et cetera, that are specifically municipal in nature, and that if you were to advertise, one could imagine that you would end up with anywhere from zero to however many applications, and that we could certainly take a look, or I could work with Scott to go through them, or another person could because of the timing of when it switches, but I'm happy to do that. It saves us some money, and it saves us, you know, we, it just seems like it would streamline the process as well, in terms of if we just say, "All right, send out, you know, load it up, let it loose, let's see what we get," even if you say, "All right, between now and the 19th, we have another meeting on the 19th, did we get any? Is CC bringing some on the flight with her to Punta Cana?" Just like saying it. And that that would sort of keep things moving forward. That's just my opinion, based upon cost savings and the fact that it's not rocket science, at least in the first instance, to figure out who looks like they've actually got experience that would dovetail with what the town needs and who maybe doesn't. It's just my opinion, but Scott, I know you don't, you and I don't agree on this, you know, not that I expect people to agree with me on everything, so, over to you for the counterpoint.
Sure, so, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good, so, a couple of things. One is, I don't know these people that are going to apply, either of these consultants and the other ones will know most of them. So their initial, so the first bunch of resumes we're going to get is the, you know, 10 people that have applied for every town administrator job in the last five years, and I'm not going to know that, because I don't know. Can we do the process, can we advertise, can we do all of that? Absolutely. Can we get candidates in? Absolutely. But, also, we, we can't screen these live, because you're putting people's jobs on the line here. So we can't, you can't sit there with the three of you and say, "Okay, we got these five resumes, let's talk about them," because these people are applying in, in confidence. And, lastly, you know, if it, if it goes too much longer, I may not be here for the end of this search, as I'm kind of leaving July. So I think those are my reasons, these consultants know the market, they know these people.
How much, Scott, I'm going to jump in, so, so you don't repeat yourself, how much does, my recollection is that you had two individuals, how much do they charge, and how quickly can we onboard them?
Well, you could probably onboard them fairly quickly. One of the consultants, which is the one we've worked with in the past, because he's got the background information and stuff for us, he doesn't have to do that, he is at about $8,000. The other consultant is $9,800.
So, and the consultant that we have worked in the past, not apropos of the current town administrator, but there were, there were gaps in his search efficacy last time, that if we were, if I were to be convinced that it was worth the 10,000, whether it's 8,000 or 9,800, it would be my opinion that we not pick someone who is going to not improve our situation, right? If we're hiring a consultant, it's to make our lives easier, to do that sort of pre-vetting, to the boots on the ground, and I don't think that the last person would be who I would pick for that, for that reason, so, but that's it, those are my two cents across.
So, I do have one other thought, one other possibility, and that would be to see if I could hire either of these consultants to help us give feedback and review the candidates that we get.
Oh, I see, sort of like a, a hybrid model, where we draft the, the whatever, the municipal thing, and then we kind of review them and look at who looks super great and who looks super crazy, you know, people who have no experience in this, et cetera. And then, if we've narrowed it, then pitch it to whomever it is that we've decided could help us to sort of further vet.
Right, right, so, basically, I would be using, so I'm going to, you know, we're going to get 10 resumes, I write, send this person the 10 resumes and say, you know, "I don't know what would cost us, $250 an hour, tell us your opinion on these 10 people, what you know."
Well, I think that would be great, especially since I do think that in the first instance, whenever, like, we all hire people for, or at least, I think we do, like, you, you can tell when you do, you send out the resume, and the resume specifically, or the ask, and the ask says, "Somebody with three to five years of experience," and all you get are people who still haven't been sworn into the bar, like, are you not reading what I, you know, you can put them in the, it's easy to, to narrow it down. How quickly would you be able to, because I would be really, I know that we're sort of short on time, and so, how quickly could you find out if, because I would be very much onboard, especially if the person willing to do it was not the person that we had before, with having someone assist us, but not charge us 10,000 for the pleasure?
Right, so I do know, and in the pit, when I can, actually Amanda's got it with her, the other firm does have a low-service cost model, which is like four grand, where, again, I do most of the work and, and they help, and I may be able to get more off of that if I take on more of what they said they were going to do.
Or, or I can, right, it doesn't have to just be you, and I'm mindful of the fact that if you, typically, when one contracts with someone, there's something in there for the fact that if it ends up being more on the back end, well, then it's more on the back end. If it ends up, it happens after you've had, you've left us to go to someplace like Punta Cana, we can figure it out with, with their assistance. I, that would be something that I would be very comfortable with. Anita? I'm sort of manipulating, not manipulating, Mark.
Scott, may I just ask a question? What, what do we get for the 9,800?
You get them writing the, a, for a better word, sales package to give to the candidates about the town and the position, you get the, the advertising, you get their services of screening the candidates themselves prior to them coming to us. And then they, they will, you know, hold your hands through as we do the interviewing and stuff.
But we still have to interview, right? I mean, that-
Yes, and unfortunately, you have to interview them on Tuesday.
Either way, and so, my thinking is if you could get the, the low-cost, entry-level, stripped-down version, it still supports what your concerns were when you were point, counterpointing, but it isn't as luxurious.
Correct.
Do you-
I mean, I have no problem doing the advertising and the background and interviewing-
I can help you draft it, I mean, it's not-
Well, it's not, it's not, I've been doing it for a lot of years, so-
Right.
You know, it's not a problem.
So you have the capacity to do that, it doesn't put you over the top?
I can, I can, I can do that, yes.
What were you going to say?
I just wanted to let you know that the two consultants' proposals are in your packet.
Yes, I see them.
Under number 10.
10, thank you.
That's helpful, thank you.
Kevin? Anything?
I mean, this is an important position, right, and we want to make sure that we put everything we can into ensuring that we find the right person. I get wanting to save money on the process, especially with a price tag of $10,000 for a search that we could potentially match by doing it ourselves, but I, I think that the way you framed it was, was really good, in that, you know, we could do a first pass, collect some resumes, see what's out there, identify if there's somebody that matches exactly what we want to do, if there is, we talk to them, if there isn't, then maybe we move forward with something a little bit more contractual with one of these consultants, because they might have people that they might know that are looking for another position, who might be a great fit for another town. I don't want to get into too much what they do, but that would always be something available to us if we don't necessarily find our person during that first blush. So, I, I like that approach, but I am also cognizant of the, the time limitations that we have right now, right?
Right.
So, whatever it is we do, let's do it.
I like that part.
Yeah, I mean, whatever we do, the time is up, we need to move forward.
Right, right. And so, is it possible to, Scott, because it seems to me, and everyone can tell me I'm insane, will not be the first time, even today, it seems to me that, and at least in terms of keeping things moving forward, what I seem, what I'm comfortable with, and I'm not hearing too, too much objection with, would be either us doing it ourselves, or sort of the hybridization model, both of which would have you, or you and me, I, I, right, doing the, the initial ask, the initial draft, and so, we could be doing that while you're confirming if, that you could maybe be knocking down the price on the hybrid model, and then if we hit trouble where we need them, we can have them, or when we get the resumes in, we can have them vet, or should we just say, I'm fully comfortable saying, "Let's just have them at a minimum do the hybrid model, with an understanding we may need to expand," and then we get rolling on the, the ad right away, so that we don't lose any time?
Yeah.
But that when we, when if the resumes-
I can talk to the consult, sorry.
No, no, you go.
I could talk to the consultant this week, I can probably nail that down. I mean, at the high end is, his hybrid model, or their hybrid model, it's a company, is four grand versus the 9,800, so that's, that's substantially less money, but I can try to see if we could do more of that, get that down.
Right, I mean, I'd love to see if we could get more, but I'm fine with four, if we can do a lot of the work ourselves. I also think it's important work, and so if we're involved in it, that's important. I think I've said important a lot.
And if it's you, I need to work with one of you, because two of you is a quorum.
No, it's a quorum, I know, I know, it'll be me.
So I got to work with one of, that you, CC, that-
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to volunteer anyone else for this, I will do this, this will be my, my swan song on my time as the chairperson.
But I'd love, I'd love to look at resumes if I can.
Oh, I absolutely think we should all be looking at resumes, it's just in terms of sitting with Scott- of sitting with Scott to do the, the ad.
Reading.
And this, right, exactly. So do we need to do a vote, or are we just?
I don't think so, I think that's just.
Nope, that's it, all right, so I think we have an action plan. And then, so I guess we're moving on to 11.
Just a couple of quick things.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Our COVID cases, still reporting, have been absolutely minimal, we had three in the last three weeks.
Wow.
Because it's going up, it's going up around in other places, that's awesome.
Oh, that's right.
It is, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm checking the state's website.
That's hilarious.
Somebody just screwed her. I didn't, I didn't out anybody, so it's a violation in the center of the room.
Forward you the, the news release from Moody's about removing the negative outlook from our rating.
Yay.
Great news.
So, great news, thank you to Todd and Anne Marie Duggan and our financial advisor. We all teamed up on that call, took our, took our turn at the microphone, and glad to see they, they agree that the town's financial position is strong and much improved over the last couple of years. And then lastly, we already talked about the meeting on the 19th, have come to terms with Comcast on a renewal license for 10 years. It's been an absolutely great process working with them.
Okay.
And support from NCTV, I think they're excited about the license as well. So we advertised that in the paper today, and it's on file with the town clerk to renew that. You'll have Comcast, you'll have Verizon next year, but this is the first of the two that.
Awesome.
So that's coming up on the 19th.
Excellent, which will be a remote meeting.
Yes, it will.
Okay, I just.
Because why?
I'm putting that in, I got one, and it was.
Got it.
It's all be here, and you'll be where?
Punta Cana, that's right.
So I guess we're on to warrants, all right? Was that it? I thought you said that was your last thing, but I didn't want to pull an Anita and.
Do you want this one, Kevin, or do you want me?
I move that the board approve five warrants for the period of March 15th, 2022, to March 29th, 2022, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also move that the board approve the regular meeting minutes of March 15th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.